...planning commission meeting would be that week of Christmas. So we haven't received any other applications at this point.
So there may be a special meeting we have to speak to.
And were you proposing they speak, do that person still appear like normal?
Yeah.
I think it's going to be important.
Just long as I don't want to sit over here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address counsel, and I can do that under the open committee meeting, please.
Hold on a second. I didn't know some people signed up, so.
That's what your special meeting. The committee meeting is usually open to this session. And I will make it short and sweet.
Okay, state your name and address for the record.
The 9521 Riverdale Circle. I'd like to comment to the department heads that are here this evening. As you know, there's legislation that's on a fast track route to amend your salaries, not you individually tonight, but your predecessor. And what I see is, in 25 years I've been here as a resident, to come from once to reduce your pay roughly $20,000. I would simply ask you gentlemen to address your thoughts to council and citizens here this, this evening on that matter. I'm sure you're aware of what is, what's going on. I would just like to comment, throw her on, advice or no advice, if the legislation is trying to be fast tracked through council now. Thank you.
I, Mr., I'm over there, but it does not affect current department heads?
I know that.
Okay, I should make sure everybody was clear.
It would not affect their pay. It's the predecessor's advice that.
Successor, though.
Successor.
Would you like me to comment on?
Not to question.
Sure, sure. I'm, I'm actually, I'd like to. From what, from what I understand, this makes for the legislation, it gives city council the option to adjust the pay for, based on experience. For example, as I understand it, my predecessor, or not my predecessor, my successor, whoever was the chief after me, the only requirement for it to be the chief of police is to have prior supervisory experience. As it's been explained to me, that if a prior, somebody, say, a retired sergeant from another police department, say even a smaller police department than Monroe Falls, were to become chief of police, it would give city council the option to not pay him as much as, say, the chief of police, a chief, former chief of police from, say, a larger city, that may deserve a little more pay. That, I, I don't see anything wrong with it personally, giving the latitude to city council and the mayor to make a recommendation as to what he feels is, is police chief or mayor.
And I would simply add that under the current payroll ordinance, there's a max not to exceed limit for department has not to be make that amount, but that's what there is in place, and it could go all the way down to minimum wage. But a minimum, this at least puts a starting amount that council and the administration could expand on. So it wouldn't be below that amount. It would definitely be above that based on qualifications.
I'm glad you brought that point out because in the legislation now, it does state that so that bar or not need or not you pay for this role, because I don't see the need for you to change that to a lower amount now because it's already available. If it's me, so I think that has to come in my mind.
I'll be last, Bill. I think it does a couple of things. One is Tom, Bill, the Jim's already explained. Two, it does have an impact. It gives flexibility to anybody who's into the position based upon what their experiences are. If I go back and look for my position here, I kind of smile at it. The only thing you have to be for this position was a 36-hour firefighter. That's all that was listed. We are in the process of changing that because I think we need to upgrade that. I think we need, as we move forward in any public service, especially I've seen this in the fire service, and this is going on nationally, we have to improve our standards because this is a profession. And with a profession, you have certain qualifications that we need to add to that. If we have fees and, and, and as you said, about $20,000 less than we have, that will have an impact on the individuals that possibly could come to this facility, this city, who want to be a member of this facility. So there's definitely an impact on that. But it, it does depend upon the individual that comes into it, based upon seniority, based upon service, based upon education. But if we raise my standard, I think we are, we have, we've raised them, we're in the process of raising them, then limitations thus hurt us to a certain degree that we need to look at and stream how we will because, in my mind, I've been here 30 years now in the city. I want quality people and quality positions because I don't take the time as a citizen to come down and listen to meetings and things. My expectations are when I call 911, I have police and fire. I want to report services up. I want somebody there who can handle those things. So $48,000 or whatever sticks in that amount you put there can have consequences to it.
Would we be better off to adjust the wording for the positions versus going after the pay? Because that's what I'm hearing is, we, we have to start out through qualifications. And you brought up the point, the, there's caps that we can pay, and even if we brought someone in here that was more qualified than the fine people we have now, then whether council could come back and discuss, well, that person needs more than what our maximum is in our legislation now. That's what I see as a citizen. I think we need to address what your qualifications mean. If you're a dollar, now I think the dollar now is already on the books. And I thank you for your input.
Mr. Chairman, will you speak, please? Well, she hears the regular committee meeting, so I got Shane Stahl sign us, so let, let Shane Stahl go next since he's signed up, and then Bob, I'll pick you down. You go ahead.
Evening, gentlemen. This is Bernie's. Shane Stahl said we moved that there. I guess just a couple takeaway slash questions slash comments that we want to classify it. I know I came in and there were some comments going on about the issues that are going to be talked about in the special meeting, so if I missed any of this, I apologize if I'm repeating. Excuse me. I'm just curious why there's this move now to separate the jobs of clerk of council from the finance director. To my knowledge, that's the way it's always been, that they've done both. And I know the article is century this weekend. There seemed to be a concern from some council members that, well, we want to do this because if the ma, the incoming mayor gets rid of the finance director, we want a backup. We want to make sure that there's somebody in each position. But the incoming mayor was quoted as saying, he's spoken with Ms. Burns and assured her that her job is fine, she's not going anywhere. So that seems contradictory to me. Also, I think the job of clerk is quoted in the paper, something around in between $23,000 and $27,000. I can't remember the exact figure. But in reading, that amount was not to be deducted from the finance director's pay. And that's no insult to you, Ms. Burns, you did a fantastic job, and all of our reactions have been very cordial. But I'm just curious, for creating this new position, why you would not take that money out of the finance director's salary to give to clerk? It seems like you're just adding an expense. It just seems a little silly to me. Excuse me. I also find it interesting that there now seems to be this move, at least to me, it appears to be this move, to protect current department heads, which I understand, want to keep your job, absolutely. But it, it just seems a little hypocritical because when the mayor came in in 2003, he demanded resignation letters from all his department heads. And now he wants to protect their jobs. So it seems odd to me, the timing. And if we are in such tight financial times and have been for the last couple of years, that's all we've talked about, is the tightening of the city's budget, and why spending, why haven't we cut pay for, let's say, the law director who used to do the job for $33,000, and now he's going to make over $100,000 this year from the city? Frankly, why have council members taken a pay cut? I think Stowe proposed, maybe it was Stowe, I can't remember, proposed that their council members make something like $1 a day because it's public service. This isn't a job that you were hired in for, that you had to apply for. It's a job you ran for, knowing your responsibilities and knowing the time commitment. So if we can cut pay, why don't we cut there? Those are my comments. Thank you.
All right, Bob, go ahead. You got five minutes.
I got five minutes?
You go ahead.
I got five. First of all, many times I've said, I can run this whole, whole city with three people over there and one person here. They all do their jobs, they all know the work. And for me to look back and say, if one of them, excuse me, die, like a councilman did a couple of years ago, later replaced it, or you find another job, or you leave, I have to replace you with a less qualified person? I don't understand that. And I don't like it. I, when I had a problem, Lee came up to the house, he was there in 30 minutes, I waited there in 30 minutes. I, Jim? I catch him out on the, on the road at 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night working, he doesn't know what an eight-hour day is anymore. Chief, I don't have much to do with you, so I'll take it for a while.
That's a good thing.
You have a rest meeting yet, Tom?
I have.
Uh, watch him.
He's curtained me a couple of years.
Okay.
The other thing is, I want to correct a mistake. I don't want council to make a mistake that another council made three years ago. Between 2006 and 2010, I was council. The mayor overspent his budget, his $25,000 a year monthly. And we called him in and smacked his hands. And he said, I'll never do this again, so. I was coming in the front door one day, and Dave Smith, who used to have gyms, yeah, put this purchase order in my face. I couldn't even read it, he added it in my face so far. And he said, I'm not going to sign this, I won't use the words he used, thing. And I said, Dave, let me read it. And I read it. And it was for blacktopping, and it was for well over the limit. And there hadn't been any votes on it, or any bids on it. And I happened to be thirsty, so I went back to the mayor's office, which Jack Morrison was there, and I said, Jack, I would like to see you for 10 minutes, when you get, when you get time. He came up to the front office, and I showed it to him, and I said, this is wrong. This is not the rule. And I was a bit heated, maybe I was too heated. And I said, I want you to write an ordinance that cuts him down to $10,000 a year. He's not staring at me, he's staring in the space. But anyhow, cut it down to $10,000 a year, which went through and was vetoed by him and went through again, and then we got it down to $10,000 a year. My four years was up then, and I left because I had to close my company, you know, I'm getting older than dirt, I'm 74 now. Anyhow, we made a mistake. And I'm the first one to admit it, and I'm the first one to say, I made a mistake. Because we, I didn't think cutting it down to $10,000 would bother, bother us too much. But what it did, it bothered us from the people that was contracted in doing the cleaning of the building. And that year, we had a very bad emergency water line underneath the Riverdale River. And frankly, Frank, you didn't say a word, frankly, Frank pulled the service department to stop at $10,000. If we'd have stopped at $10,000, all, all the north side of the town would have been muddy water for months to come, and it would take us weeks and weeks and weeks to clean it out. So I really don't want you guys to make the same, make the same mistake we did that time. Where we cut him down to $10,000, you want to cut him down to $5,000. You don't understand the problems this will cause. You'll be having more meetings, you'll be having more hours in here, because you'll have to prove everything there is coming through. And if nothing comes through, that's a problem. So think wisely about that. If you want to spend a lot more time down here, work hard for you. But we made a mistake. In fact, I apologize for that. I apologize for your, for that. I was mad when I did it. And don't make that mistake again. Council did it once.
Okay, thank you. Ron, you got three minutes. I'm being honest, at 7:37, I guess it starts at 9:00.
All right, thanks, everyone. First of all, on that 48 maximum, I hear what you're saying, I, I just don't believe it. The legislation explains that very clearly. I don't like the way it's structured. And I think you might want to go back and take a look at it and rewrite it to what you really wanted to do, I hope what you really wanted to do, not what some people think that certain people want to do.
Sorry, Mr. Brown, which one was that?
The one with the, the cap on, on the salary.
Oh, the salary, okay.
And it just reads, it's not clear. You know, listening to John and I over here, I have to agree with that. But what this says, I don't think this says what these people say. But I think you really ought to look at it, that if you're going to get somebody to have a maximum, it doesn't say you have any flexibility at all, from what I can hear on this side. So I would, I would hope that you would vote this down and go back and rewrite it if this is what you want, so that you can hire somebody for $60,000 or $70,000 if you choose to do that. This is, the way I read it, says you can't do that. The other thing is, Mr. Pitts, you absolutely shocked me because, because I have to agree with the, the last part of his, his presentation absolutely thoroughly. I ran a faculty for many years, and I think some of you who were on council with me also remember how much I fought that $10,000 limit, and how much I wanted to get that raise back up to, I think it was the state minimum at the time of $25,000. And we finally got some sense back at the council and brought it back up to where it should be. You can't even go out and buy a junk pickup truck for $5,000. And that's what we found out. Frank was trying to buy some used equipment, a used, I think it was some sort of used vehicle for the service department. And it couldn't do it without going out for a formal bid. Not a quotation, not three quotations, but a formal bid package. That's what this requires, is a formal bid package with all the Ts crossed, all the Is dotted, telling exactly, precisely to whomever what you want. And it's ridiculous. You know, I, I don't know what the purpose of this is, but I know when Bob introduced the legislation at $10,000, I know why he did it. He just said why he did it. And thank you for telling the folks that what happened was wrong and didn't work, and it will never work. It's going to be a mess. So please vote that down and just forget the whole thing. Thank you.
Ron, were you on council then?
Yes, I was on when we got it back. I was on, I was on council when we voted to bring it back up to $25,000.
And I'll, I'll, I will read against this. I'll give you a minute. Okay.
That's all it takes. I would like to defend council, not on this legislation. I haven't been a councilman for 12 years, and I think even four or six years before that is the last time this city council got a raise. So when you talk about them taking a reduction in the amount of money they make, this council is so far behind anybody else in the area, it's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. If the law director can be good, see.
I haven't heard that he's not.
It's closing. And Chris, Chris said I have to change the.
Yes.
He said I have to change.
You took the sign sheet away before 7:30, or were you going to give people one?
This is a special.
Okay, so that's, that's what a special means?
Yes, so I'm just putting it here now.
Oh, thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute recess. I was delayed by the train again. What? Well, we do, I think we're going to turn.
Should, should give some thought of possible candidates for this, or a way to, to search for, obviously fairly quickly. Joe, I don't know if you want.
I'd say bring some names to December 15th, maybe some, some ideas of his candidate.
I have a question, Mayor. When we had this discussion before, it's the full job, it'll be a civil service position. Do we know that for sure?
No, it's not.
It's not, okay.
It's a rule of the council.
And is it defined as full-time or part-time?
We haven't written up the job description, we're waiting for this to pass, but given the amount, I mean, you can always change the, the dollar amount, but for $24,000, I would say part-time, right?
Does that, does that help here, benefits, how many hours a week you have, the healthcare issue, you have a lot of issues?
Well, and that's why I guess we budgeted the $24,000 plus thing. We didn't let, it's not plus healthcare benefits because as a part-time person, they wouldn't be eligible.
And what the hourly wage is going to be.
Right. So, I mean, that can all, that can all be determined.
That'd be determined quickly.
Right.
I have a discussion. Will you motion approve?
I'd like to motion approve 2015-12.
Second.
Okay.
Ron, hold on a second.
Mr. Cho.
Based on what I just heard, it sounds like this is something that you support Ms. Burns and I respect my focus.
Mr. Stahl?
No.
Mr. Ayona?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Steinwell?
Yes.
Mr. Bucis?
Yes.
Pass it along.
Resolutions for second reading, resolution number 2014-47. A resolution amending resolution number 2014-20 regarding compensation for non-bargaining employees of the city of Monroe Falls, state of Ohio, when declaring an emergency.
Yeah, I would, we'll discuss this. I may go over to the table, but if we have time to take it through, write what we want to write and see what we write.
Steve, I have a couple ideas on that. First of all, like everyone said, shows maximum salaries. I think we should change that to minimum, or to base salaries. I think that makes more sense with what we're doing here.
I would hope, because if that's what you're going to pay, so we're not going to get it, but.
But another thing, Ms. Burns just talked about it, with an assistant finance director, I think we should add that to it and possibly put a base salary on there also. And with that said, possibly an assistant service director, and that's really covering us, covering the various directors who, if they're out, if there's an absence, anything that's necessary like that.
Well, probably change appropriate. The other part of this, to my recollection, that may be an error, but this language makes the law director employee in the city. The law director of Monroe Falls has not been an employee for Mayor Larson's 12 years or Mayor CSX four years. Ms. Brubman was a contract, right? You know, when you're an employee, they become employee. Potential healthcare, you certainly have pension match, you certainly have workers' comp match, you certainly have Medicare match, you know, you have those other issues. And I don't understand why we want to go and say, new law director has to be a city employee versus a contract, which has been the case for Mr. Morrison's entire term as law director and his predecessor, predecessor's term as law director.
Well, I think, I, you know, gee, Steve, I think I've heard you for six years complaining about Mr. Morrison's contract, and.
I, I think it's too high, but I still, you know, he doesn't need to be an employee, he's got to be an employee, getting, you know, paying another 15% or 14.95 PERS and 2.45 Medicare, or even worse, those are all costs you have to factor in. I don't understand, not agreeing with the contract price that Mr. Morrison makes, but I would hope Mr. Armstrong has a lower contract price, but still should have the contract out of employee, in my opinion.
Again, I think it makes all the sense in the world, given the, the criticism and also the time that the law director's been able to spend with us, it's very difficult. I have to admit, one of the frustrating, frustrating things about having Jack as a law director is scheduling time to meet with him is damn near impossible. And I understand he's a practicing attorney, he has commitments to his law firm, he has to keep, I totally understand that, but it's very difficult to schedule time on Thursday or Friday and be able to know exactly when Jack's going to be here. Plus, it seems to me that our department has, Jim, and maybe Jim and Tom more so than Lee, have questions of law director on a fairly regular basis. I think it would be beneficial to have that person dedicated to the city's needs here in the office. And $48,000, I mean, I'll be honest, I mean, you consider Jack's base is 66, we're paying him, I think this year we're going to pay $100,000. But he does all the postage, he does all the courier service, he does filings, he, he funded the bill for the time before the Supreme Court. I mean, he does typing all the third work, the whole nine yards, I'm sure does far more than that. So we've got the president of Christine's local law firm as a law director, 66 grand a year at base on contract. We could have our own lawyer here for $48,000 and probably, probably get service on a faster basis.
And, I mean, so what I, I guess I was going to think, if you're proposing this be a full-time law director, $48,000, you have the healthcare and all those issues, and I don't know, I don't know what Mr. Armstrong's thoughts, but I, and I would have to defer to an attorney. Can you get an experienced, indispensable law attorney for $48,000 a year for their full-time job? Because that's what I hear you talking about, a full-time job.
That goes back to, with, with IPod, if we make it the base rather than the maximum, that $48,000 is the starting point.
I just, I don't, and I get you, but my thing is, I don't, I don't think the law director needs to be a full-time position here in the city. I don't. And I don't know that we should make him an employee. I think the contract situation has worked well for both, but.
I think.
Just my thoughts.
I mean, yes, it's worked because, because we had a very good attorney, but at the same, I think we probably miss some time in the next because we don't have a law director here during regular business hours, during the week.
Can I ask Mr. Armstrong a question?
Just real quick, though, before you do that, and yes, I believe this is, the city is now, the city has a population of 5,479. A law director shall receive a salary of $26,000. a law director shall receive a salary of $26,530.20 per year.
I know that's not full-time, if you call.
Yeah, I, I only said per year.
Well, and.
Maybe it's not, so full-time just double.
Because if you go back to Mr. Goldsmith's tenure, which was way back in the mayor's office here, Mr. Goldsmith was an employee, the city was a part-time employee.
Yeah.
Okay. Just saying, I guess it's okay. My question, because you're an attorney, as far as I know, you've called the attorney in the room. Municipal law, experienced attorney, prepared to be law director, $48,000 a year full-time.
No, good answer.
That's my concern.
That's my good answer. The questions that I'm hearing are all excellent questions and they, and I think Mr. Barnes, forgetting about our conversation last year, but last week about the motive, the idea of getting together and setting a salary schedule like Mr. Barnes emailed to us from that community, it's been escaping me right now.
There was several before.
There was, there was several, actually. I think the funny part about it is actually your email came in as spam, so I didn't see it right away, so. But that, that being said, this is, this is one of the reasons I was so upset last week. It's that this is too important of an issue to sit there and try to decide it in 15 minutes with an audience, a handful of citizens. This is a very important issue, not only for what the base of what we're going to pay, but somebody mentioned it during, one of the, one of our citizens mentioned it during the course of the commentary, about somebody decides to leave for a better job. If we, if we have a good person, I mean, I, when I went door to door, I was glad I wasn't running against Lee Chayton, I want to have choice. I mean, he's not the most popular guy in the city, no offense, Mr. Larson, but I mean, this guy is, he's, they, I, if anybody likes to think English is a shit, they talk, and I have the thought of not being in a situation where you have a salary range where you can sit there and bump people up on step increases. You know, we all have, ourselves and relatives wanting to be able to do that. I think we actually need to set together a salary schedule for, for our, our main employees and I would like to, I would like to do that, but I would like to do that in a methodical way where we have a lot of input. We send it back to committee so we can talk about it, have people come in, look at some other candidates like Mr. Barnes did, but have time to actually do that and see what fits, not only for Monroe Falls with our size, but also whatever income we're going to have. Because unfortunately, we didn't get the letter put on the ballot in March, so, which we had talked about all summer. That's what my preference is and that's why my preference is that. It's not that the proposal is in and of itself, well, I think $48 is too low even for a base considering our patrol officer making $56, $57. But that being said, it's an important issue and needs to be addressed in an appropriate way. And I assure the council that I want to work with you on that issue because that doesn't only affect next month, February, that could affect three years, four years, five years, six years from now. Mr. Steinwell made a good comment about maybe having assistant chief. Well, we've finally hired an assistant chief for fire chief, but have an assistant service director as well. So you have that continuity built into the, the system and that's all things we could look at with regard to the salary. With regard to the, the law director, you want to have flexibility with what you can do and the, either you pay somebody, you know, $40,000 and then you do a contract on retainer and they go at $150, $175 an hour, whatever, or whatnot, but those are all things that we want to discuss and we want to discuss them in a very intelligent manner. And, and that's why I would ask that you consider tabling this legislation and giving us a chance to review this and coming back with a very sound system, not only for right now and for whoever may be hired now. Why not, since we have the ability to keep the employees who we really don't want to leave. So I appreciate your counsel's advice.
Again, for certification, you do have the salary scheduled for all the employees. And this is for a max adjustment.
We have a max for the departments. We don't have a base, we don't have anything other than a shall make, and we discussed this over here. Because you have to call out the finance item what they're making, it says shall make no more than a maximum of this. I think the fire chief is $78, but it's not what he makes, what he cooked by orders. Did you know that didn't?
$75.
Okay. I don't think you make $75.
Thanks, Steve.
I mean, when you do that periodically, this one is actually a menu, one that was made in 2014. It's adjusted.
But it changes the law record for sure and it doesn't allow, I mean, those are good thoughts, perhaps. I mean, I would agree with some of those things, we should look at that, we need to have those transitional things because we are blessed with long-serving, long-experienced department heads. But we're not blessed with doing a lot of, well, we've made some steps in the first part right now, but as far as floor planning and stuff, because, and not that anybody wants to leave anything else, but Jim's not as young as he used to be and Tom's not as young as he used to be. And, you know, it'd be nice if you had an assistant there that's come along versus they, something comes up and you say, you know, well, I do want to retire, retire, or I have this better job and I experienced it, you haven't had anybody kind of being that deputy or assistant. And that's a need of, not just our city, many organizations, I think, I will say, surrounding departments, primarily because they're bigger, Goodbetter Falls always does a good job with that, or police department as far as having cabinets and stuff. So that's where they have to get somebody that's some experience, so.
I think, you know, a couple things, one, the law director, I'd like to emphasize the point that there are people in this room that are endlessly about political cronyism and the high pay for the law director and things associated with that. And I think this in effect puts, does the incumbent mayor a favor with respect to that because in effect, he's going to have to come back to council where he should come and say that, look, you know, there are people out there that can hire a law director for $48,000, but I need to pay them $75. Nothing precludes him from that, this is a base. And so, it's, I think that all of this is reasonable, I think even adding, when I add the assistants into it, I think that's reasonable as well. It's, it's a working document, council next year can change it. But I do think this is, is in the best interest of enjoying the citizens of Monroe Falls. And nothing here changes anyway, except for the law director and less changing positions anymore.
Remember, you had a motion to table until.
I don't care if it's the first or second meeting in January, because I strongly do believe the incoming council people should have a voice and a thought in this because it's long, so I don't care whether it's the first or second meeting.
Was, we have two motions on for it?
No, there's no, I was. The motion was tabled, the man has the motion, and I was second.
Good man, if you want, I would like to see you send this back to a committee and maybe have a select committee of the council to work on this issue and not necessarily have a reading per se, but come up with ideas to address some of the issues that were raised with regard to Mr. Barnes' point with regard to whether or not we want to have any full-time law director, whether that's reasonable, what they want to pay, whether it's better to do a contract, but also those assistant directors or assistant chiefs and whatnot. That gives you time to actually do that right. And I think if the council does, maybe even has a special committee to address those issues, I really would want to do this right because I don't really want to spend January, February undoing what happens in December in a hurry.
What you, I guess the point is, is unless you're planning on making changes, there is no change.
The law director certainly.
Law directors has to change. Regardless of whatever, and Jack Morrison's contract's at the end of the January and his, I mean, he's been a law director, so I would have to replace the law director.
Well, you, I take it back, yes, you will have to replace the law director.
Okay, so, you know, so now, right then, probably one of the most important positions, not only me, but also the council, it's been limiting my ability to, to do that. And as you already know, you already have the ability to approve what everybody up for the point. That's, like I said, I would ask that you simply send this back and have the council have a small group of people to look into this, perhaps with the help of Ms. Burns, the finance director, who will be here, unless she, I hope to God doesn't, but changes are fine next year, and to work in coordination for the appropriate systemism we come up with.
Can we, can we adjust after we vote on the table today?
We have a motion.
We have a motion to table.
What's going on there, I call.
Should, don't we need to select a date that we want to table it?
January.
Second or do you want to push that?
Second meeting in January.
Second meeting or you want to go to February?
Second meeting.
Second meeting would be January 19.
I have a agenda for this that I want to do.
Okay. All right, so, Mr. Steinwell?
Yes.
Mr. Ayona?
Yes.
Mr. Bucic?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Oh, no.
Mr. Tove?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mike, yes, I'm. Yeah, I was going to suggest, and Chris Councilman pointed, amending it to eliminate the law director from this and deal with the first four tonight and then decide the law director before we could.
I think we'd have a table, gives us time to address all of it. I think, of what I did, assistant chiefs and such is, I mean, I think there's not even going right, so we don't have to turn around and do it anyway.
One word.
Resolution number 2015-48. A resolution authorizing the mayor entered into an agreement with the Southern County Public Defenders Commission to provide legal counsel to indigent criminal defendants during the calendar year 2016 and declaring an emergency.
Is there any urgency to this? Okay.
Resolutions for third reading, resolution number 2015-39. A resolution authorizing the amendment of the 2015 appropriations as defined in resolution 2014-45.
You want to make that motion to table this, I'm asking you to write the first. I would make a motion that we table this, again, whether it's the first or second meeting in January, because at this point in time, Ms. Burns has advised, we have Mr. Morrison's letter, a particular concern is invoice for cost advance January 1st, 2007, to present for $30,175,000. But Ms. Burns or nobody has a breakdown of what those costs are, and I don't feel comfortable, regardless of who it is, saying, here, I advanced the cost for him, I didn't say he went before, and then pay.
So actually, I'd be okay with the, our next week, because he should be.
Okay, yeah, right.
And I have emails to request that?
So just table it till the next week.
Okay.
Next one, yeah, yeah.
I don't need expense.
Okay, so, Mr. Stahl, hold on a second, okay. Okay, Mr. Bucic?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Steinwell?
Yes.
Mr. Ayona?
Yes.
Mr. Tove?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 2015-41 amended. A resolution to make annual appropriations for the current expenditures of the city of Monroe Falls, state of Ohio during the fiscal period ending December 31st, 2016, and declaring an emergency. Basically, the budget, the 2016 budget.
I made a motion to pass 2015-41. Give me a second.
Give it off.
Second. I think before we comment, but, okay, now, what's in here is just setting aside money does not necessarily mean we are spending that, correct?
For the clerk of council.
Clerk of council, well, I'm sorry, to clerk of council.
I think it's the same as any other appropriation or appropriating the money, and you're not really, forces us to spend $23,000.
Right, and what we would be looking at.
I'm seeing a job description or a number of hours or anything else.
Oh, right, and we would have to, you're going to have, if you're approving the budget the way it stands, if we're not going to replace the administrative assistant, I'm going to need your approval to move budget dollars from there to the council, so you'll, you have a part in how that all plays out, okay?
Roll call.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Tove?
Yes.
Mr. Steinwell?
Yes.
Mr. Ayona?
Yes.
Mr. Bucic?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Okay, pass it. I'd like to put a motion for adjournment. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Means adjourned.
Thanks, thank you all for coming.
Yes, thank you all, I appreciate your input.
8:36.
Does the chair let you in? The judge?
The chair.